Good evening. Welcome to the January 27, 2014 Burnsville Planning Commission Session. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome to Deb Gerres, who's here tonight instead of Chris. Glad she could make it out on our cold winter evening.
Thank you.
And the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes from commissioners?
None from me, Chair.
Any changes from Deb?
No.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
So moved to Chair.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes four zero. I should say anybody against. Guess that passes four zero. Sorry about that. The second item on the agenda is a work session and training, Minnesota River Quadrant, Long Range Plan, Gateway Plan, and Sustainability Plan. Deb?
Thank you. The reason that we thought this would be a good topic for the commissioners is that it's really something that we haven't gone through, and we have a lot of new commissioners. We also have a lot of new council members and new city staff members, quite frankly. And this is going to be really our focus area for development over the next 20 years. And the reason being is because our heart of the city, which we had a lot of development activity these past five, seven years, is pretty much filled out. There are a couple more properties left to be developed, and you'll probably be seeing some site plans from those later on this year, but not a lot of land available. So we are moving into the Minnesota River Quadrant. And the Planning Commission actually has been looking at a number of items. You've reviewed several interim use permits very recently, a couple of site plans for some expansions down in the Minnesota River Quadrant. So we thought what we'd do is just take a little bit of an opportunity on a really cold night to go through and give you some background on how this plan came to be. There's been extensive public participation in many, many elements of the planning process. And kind of to reiterate for Planning Commission that the things that we do aren't necessarily seen by people in terms of, you know, you make a plan and then it develops that year. The plans that planners and planning commissioners often deal with are sometimes decades in the making, which Minnesota River Quadrant is. And although the general public may not realize that, there is a whole lot of work that goes into major area development site like the Minnesota River Quadrant. And we know that there will be redevelopment occurring in the future out there. There are both private projects and public projects, many different agencies working on things. So there's going to be quite a focus in that area. So we just thought this might be a good opportunity to just review some of that. Want you to know that this is very informal. If you have questions or comments at any time, we're here to, you know, to raise those and provide discussion. Again, just really want to get you feeling comfortable with Minnesota River Quadrant and where we're going or why we are where we are. And hopefully, if I can do this. There we go. The main components in terms of agency requirements or city requirements that are related to this part of the city are the Minnesota River Quadrant concept plans, and you all have a copy of that. That plan actually came to a culmination in 2006. And it's really a reflection of years and years and years of activities that have occurred out there, different proposals by the major landowners, and a lot of study by the entire community and many other organizations. That was, that concept plan is now part of the city's current comprehensive plan. It was introduced in 2006 and remains in there. The North Gateway Plan, these are guidelines for development, and there are links for the North Gateway Plan, the Sustainability Plan, and pretty much everything we'll be talking about tonight on the city's website. It's not something generally that the Planning Commission looks at page by page, but it is something that staff uses to review applications, and you will see references in the future to these things. So we just wanted to give you an idea of what they were and where they come from. The Sustainability Plan, that is a separate focus, I guess, of the city. A few years ago, in 2009, the city adopted a sustainability guideline plan, and that really permeates all aspects of the city. And what we do is we really try to find how we can maximize the, maximize the potential for a project or something, also keeping in mind its implications on future generations and looking at it in terms of conservation practices, or how can you do the most with the least amount of impacts, negative impacts, to the environment, to the social environment and financially. So those all come into play when we talk about the Minnesota River Quadrant. I want to talk just a brief minute on regional planning. You may be seeing, you may have seen, or you will be seeing probably in the next couple of years, references to Thrive MSP, and that is the Metropolitan Council's next set of regional plans that they are putting together. What happens is, in terms of regional planning and long-range planning, is that we had the State of Minnesota adopt Land Planning Act that dates back to 1976. They created the Metropolitan Council as a regional form of government, and the Metropolitan Council has several areas that they do regional planning for, including the seven-county metro and some adjacent communities and counties. Primarily, they look at regional parks, regional transportation systems, the airports. They also do take a look at land use, trails, affordable housing, and some of those things, environment. And you'll be hearing those large headings, I guess, if you will, kind of throughout this process. And you can hopefully, by the end, see the link of how this, you know, how this all works together. The Metropolitan Council does develop regional plans. As I said, the Thrive MSP 2040, they're in the process of putting those plans together now. And there are various public input meetings, and we try to forward that information to you. Usually your Minnesota planning information will have that. But they're, they're looking at all aspects of the plan to come together with the regional plan. And what happens is when, once they have their regional plan, they prepare system statements, and they send them out to each of the local governments. And what those system statements do is outline what cities like Burnsville need to do or address in our long-range planning to bring it into compliance or to be consistent with the regional plans. So we're looking at, with Thrive MSP 2040, they believe that they'll be issuing those system statements in the year 2016. So we're talking, you know, two years from now. The Land Planning Act calls for local communities to update comprehensive plans every 10 years, and it's based on updated census information. The difficulty is that the census information that we're using as a basis for our plans is usually many years old. By the time, you know, everything catches up from the regional to the local plans. So if you recall, just in, just last year, we did an update to the comprehensive plan to incorporate census data, and that's usually how that, that ends up coming together. But in any effect, that's just a real quick snapshot of, of the Metropolitan Council and the state. The other element of comprehensive planning is that that is what provides the legal foundation for the city to adopt ordinances and various plans. And there is enabling legislation that allows the cities to do certain things. And we find those, and we work with those as a planning commission in terms of our zoning ordinance, every time we write amendments or changes to the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and those district-type standards and things. It all, all has a trail back to enabling legislation. We do that. We also use the comprehensive plan to help in establishing what the city's long-range goals are. And then tied to the comprehensive plan are the city's capital improvements program, which is a five-year financial plan that's done each year and updated each year to help prepare for the investments that need to take place on major projects and things within the city. So all of those, all of those elements work together. And the comprehensive plan, even though we're the planners and work with it, it really does affect every aspect of, of the city in terms of the, the different departments and the residents and local businesses. You have seen this before, and putting it up here, the planning pyramid, and this is something that commissioners, I think that you know, but just something that our city attorney had put together. In terms of the type of input that we have and the, the amount of creativity and planning, when it comes to the comprehensive plan and the zoning amendment, we have got a lot of latitude to develop our plans. We're really looking at, to the point of, we need to be consistent with adjacent communities and the Metropolitan Council, but really, we have a lot of flexibility in that. And that's also where the public has got a lot of ability to influence over our plans for the community. But what happens is, in the first arrow that is on the left-hand side, is people generally have a hard time thinking long range. And so when we're dealing with comprehensive plan amendments and general zoning amendments, you'll notice that there probably are very few people in the audience, and that's because it's, it's hard to conceptualize, you know, well, how is this going to affect me or my particular property? What happens is, as you go up the pyramid, you start getting into more limited discretion that we as planners and the city have in terms of different, you know, subdivision approvals, for example, for a plat, as long as the plat meets the ordinance, we really can't deny it. So our discretion is, is more limited. But as you move up, again, at those levels where we have conditional use permits and variances and building plans and things, that's where people really see what's affecting them. And that's where they come in, and we hear a lot of input at those meetings, but yet the discretion area for us is limited once you get to that, that peak point. So just understanding that, that that is occurring. It happens also with property owners when we're dealing with various development projects, et cetera. So what I'd like to hopefully leave with tonight, or for the commissioners to leave with, is to have an understanding that for Burnsville, we do work very hard at involving the public and affected property owners at that level when we're doing these larger plans and zoning studies, so that we get their input continually through that process. And that's something that I think is unique to Burnsville, and I'll show you why here in a few minutes. So I've talked about the regional and just general planning, zoning, our ordinances and things. Something else that's unique about Burnsville is the city governance model. And what I'd like to draw your attention to is, in that circle, the top right-hand part of that talks about the ends, the city's ends. And those are theme areas that the council establishes, and they've had these for a number of years. And we provide, as a staff, feedback to them on a monthly basis on these various ends and outcomes. And it's also used to help in budgeting, planning, and, and those types of things. And the thing that I really would like to just draw your attention to are, in this, from the last round, the last annual ends and outcomes, the categories are safety, youth, neighborhoods, development, redevelopment, which is primarily what we work with, with the planning department, environment, transportation, city services, and financial management. And what happens with those is the city council, every year, adopts ends and outcomes for each of those theme areas. For planning, ours is related to development, redevelopment, and it's a general broad statement that people find, you know, Burnsville a balanced community in terms of residential and business development. And then there are several outcomes that we continually provide feedback to the city council on. With regard to these, one of them is the Minnesota River Quadrant. And so that is always a continual, where are we at? Where are we going? Within that, we have got the KMM, which is the Kramer Mining and Materials, and they own a substantial amount of property, basically all the quarry area that, the limestone quarry. They used to own the area where the waste management landfill is, and that dates back to the 50s. So that use has been there that long, but yet, you know, continues to operate in today's environment, and has, they've been involved very closely in planning for the Minnesota River Quadrant. What I want to advise you of too is, we will be talking tonight about some other previous planning efforts, and they've been community-wide and some community-generated reports. You'll hear reference to Partnerships for Tomorrow, and that is referring to a study or a group that got together back in the mid-'90s. And it was really prompted by some of the religious organizations, the school district, Fairview Ridge's Hospital, and other service organizations, Community Action Council, et cetera. And the city was involved in that too, but it was a kind of a visioning process involving all these agencies into what does Burnsville, what do we want to be, and how do we provide that as a community? And you'll hear a lot about partnerships, and that goes back to this, or Partnerships for Tomorrow process. And there was a plan that was ultimately developed. It had 64, I think, some outcomes, and all of these various organizations that participated have taken the role that, and taken the commitment that they will continue to work on accomplishing those ideals that were set forth. So it's much more than just a city-like comprehensive plan process. It was a major, major process. The themes that they developed, the major themes related, again, to safety, youth, neighborhoods, development, environment, and transportation. So I hope you're seeing kind of a theme here between the regional planning and also local things that have happened, cut it from ground up as opposed to coming down. The governance then also has the same basic theme areas, that governance model that we just talked about. And you'll see in our comprehensive plan, we basically have the same chapters or elements in our comprehensive plan. So all of those things are tied together. And this is just a quick slide just showing, you know, that we do have a future land use plan, economic development, housing plan, neighborhoods, et cetera, transportation. Those are major elements of our planning efforts, and that's been consistent all the way since the city was incorporated back in the mid-1960s. When we're talking about the Minnesota River Quadrant, there are several, I think, key sites or areas to be aware of. And the Minnesota River Quadrant refers generally to everything that's north of Highway 13 and west of 35W, south of the river, and then up to the Savage city border. And within that, there are a couple of major landowners. And we've talked about a couple of them already, the Kramer Quarry Site, which is more than half of the land area. And then also, we have got the, the landfill, the Burnsville Sanitary landfill. The other third, the property that is located closest to 35 north of the railroad tracks is all owned by the McGowan family. And there are two different landfill sites within that. There is a landfill to the north, which has, it's known as the Freeway landfill, and that landfill is the last Minnesota Pollution Control Agency superfund site in Minnesota. That is a landfill that the property owner believes has been closed, but the PCA doesn't agree that it's been closed to meet state standards. The other landfill where part of it has been closed is the old Freeway landfill, and that's what's the golf course, or not the golf course, but the driving range is located on that, and it's just across the street. That has been closed. That is also part of the McGowan family properties. The areas to the south of the railroad tracks are primarily the areas that are zoned with our Gateway Industrial Heavy and Gateway Industrial Medium zones. And those are areas that, the area to the west is mostly the heavy industrial, Gateway Industrial Heavy. And that is set up, or was set up, to reflect where a lot of the very heavy industrial uses have been located, and also adjacent and savage, also has very intense land uses. So it kind of corresponds, and it made sense to locate that zoning district or create that zoning district in that area. And that is an area where outside storage is allowed and very heavy industrial-type processes. And that's something that, all the way back to Partnerships for Tomorrow, community members and businesses thought was very important to be able to have a place in Burnsville where you could have those outdoor storage and those heavy industrial-type uses. So that's really what that area is set for. It also has rail access. And again, one thing to remember too, when this area was developed in the '50s and '60s and, and throughout time, the, one of the prime transportation corridors before 35W was the Minnesota River. So we've got barge activity that takes place there. So there is a lot of barge activity that takes place at PV and some of the other businesses in Savage, but we still have deliveries to US Salt up there, right by the river. So you have that. And then, of course, over time, I-35 has become the major, the major transportation feature, and then Highway 13 always has kind of been through there. The Gateway Industrial Medium is that area that's closest to Highway 35 and Highway 13, kind of that area just that's most visible. And it's also the area that's had the, traditionally, you've seen over the years, stockpiles of dirt and various activities. This is an area that's a transitional area, dating back to the Partners for, Partnerships for Tomorrow. They thought it would be a good place to have some type of a commercial industrial campus type of area, an area that's highly visible, that would have a good impact to people who are coming to the city, kind of a representation, and also an area for real tax base to happen. It's moved throughout the years to, you know, office, to medical, technical campus. I think that's how it's referred to in our current comprehensive plan, and basically a more higher, much higher use than the open storage that you see out there now. This is also the area, again, in transition. This is the area where the Planning Commission is seeing the recent interim use permits for the soil remediations. There are very bad soils in that area, peat 20 feet plus deep. As such, you can't build on that, not developable. With the advent of the Highway 13 and County Road 5 interchange project, because of the way that that's being designed, there's a lot of excess dirt that's available from that project. Costs a lot of money to have to move that dirt. The city and some of the property owners have created, and something that is a great partnership, in that we have developed this interim use practice and zoning, which allows the property owners to take that good fill from the 13 and 5 project, to mix it at the site with the peat and to correct those soils. And they get to sell that material, which is good for the private property owners. What the city ultimately gets from that is developable property on a major, major interchange in the Twin Cities area. So benefit, benefit, plus plus. And that's kind of the, the way that the MRQ, the MRQ has developed and will continue to develop. This is just an aerial photo showing us, now we get back again to reality, of what's actually out there. This, you see I-35 in the foreground, it really is looking west with the Minnesota River on the far right-hand side. We've got US Salt, we've got the Freeway landfill, that's the one that is the superfund site. You really can't develop much, put much on a landfill, because the soils keep compressing and things due to the, the natural gas that's created, or the methane gas and settling and whatnot. And then also, too, it's an area that needs to be protected so that you don't have issues of water contamination and those types of things. So we've got that Freeway landfill. In the foreground, we've got the Waste Transfer Station, and that is also part of the McGowan properties. And that takes waste, actually, we've taken waste here in Burnsville at that station from the entire metropolitan area. So it's, when we started with this area of the city, it started out as kind of the, it's the place that you dump stuff. It's the place where the landfills have been, it's the place for the heavy manufacturing, heavy industrial. And that's how this area developed traditionally. Then through the years, starting with Partnerships for Tomorrow, starting with some of the redevelopment plans of the individual property owners, there was this thought, maybe we should look at reclaiming the riverfront area. Environmental concerns and factors are a big component of that, partially because of the landfill, landfills that are out there, but also because you have an opportunity for a natural resource and connection to other regional systems. The Fort Snelling state system, and there's a regional trailway. If you go further to the west, Chocapi, and all the way down, there are regional trails and Greenway corridors. So there's really a unique opportunity for Burnsville to try to recapture that, that area for recreation-type purposes as opposed to the heavy, heavy industrial. And those plans, again, too, have kind of proceeded throughout the years.
Deb, can I ask you a question while you're there?
Certainly, yeah.
But that picture, is the entire, the Freeway landfill, is that entire grass space, the land, I mean, does it really go from the interstate back to the tree line and to the road next to the river? Is that entire thing landfill?
Where you see the green area is primarily the landfill. Just above that is more of the quarry property. There's a part of the quarry property, another 40, 50 acres, that actually abuts the riverfront. And then beyond that would be the Waste Management landfill.
Because in this picture, this landfill looks substantially larger than the Waste Management one. Is that?
It's, they're actually, yeah, it's probably wider east to west, probably about the same size. But yeah, the, the area where the actual filling for the waste is much larger in the Freeway landfill than it is at the, at the Waste Management site.
I had never seen this picture before, so thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just kind of interesting. So when you are seeing development plans come in... So when you are seeing development plans come in, you know, well, we've got these great, you know, the pretty Minnesota River Quadrant, you know, concept and, and all of these things, we also have to look at what the reality is. And are we going to get, you know, a huge convention center come in next to an operating quarry that's using dynamite on a daily basis, you know? Probably not. So we're, you know, probably looking at interim strategies. And the interim use permits is one way to capitalize on that County Road 5, 13 project. Some of the things that Planning Commission has seen, you have seen McGowan come in, and we did grant a year or two ago, an interim use permit for him to do cement processing on part of, part of the site that's not the landfill, part of his property that's not the landfill, but on an interim basis. And in those interim use permits, we usually look at those being 10 to 15 years. Not that we know that 15 years is the magic date when MRQ is going to pop, but that gives us a pretty good, you know, we know it's long range. So we want to allow property owners to be able to use their property, it's to the city's benefit, to let them gain and be able to use that property for financial gain in the interim period until such a time as the quarrying stops and that whole quarry, not the whole quarry, but most of it fills up to a freshwater lake, and the landfill ceases operation, and we have a, an 18-hole golf course, so.
I think the MRQ also allows the city to get TIF money.
Yes.
So that's a benefit.
Yes.
That we have to take into account.
Exactly. The city, a couple of years ago, was able to work with the state to extend the timeline for tax increment financing for this easterly part of the Minnesota River Quadrant, basically to allow us to continue to use TIF money for soil corrections and things. And that's something that is very needed, and again, kind of opportune with some of the other projects that are going on down there. Just wanted to show you just really quickly, that Burnsville has been a planned community since it was incorporated in 64. If you take a look here, just really the whole area of the Minnesota River Quadrant, industrial. There's a tiny area, kind of in the middle there, up by the river, that's, they kind of thought it'd be park, but pretty much all just heavy industrial and then along 13, commercial. So that kind of reflected what was there at the time and kind of a lot of what continues to be there. 1980, same thing, comprehensive plan, all industrial. The public, little public piece has gone away up by the river, as you see. But then down to the south by Highway 13, on the north side, they have a, a general retail type area. And when you drive by, that's just generally what you see out there, some of the older retail strip center, like where McCracken's is, and some of those things, been around for a long, long time. And those are reflective of some of those older zones and land use. In 1987, the city decided to do a survey of its residents, this is one of the earlier surveys, and it was in, or reflective of, there's a lot of development that was happening in Burnsville at that time, in the, in the later 70s and 90s, probably the prime time for development in Burnsville, and again, Apple Valley a little bit later. But they did a, a community survey, and they found out from that, that although residents were satisfied with, you know, what, what was happening in Burnsville, they were concerned that, you know, in the future, because of the pace of development and all the things that were happening, that the things that they valued about Burnsville may not be there for future generations. So kind of with the results of that, came this whole idea for doing a further visioning process. So the council initiated what's called Vision for Tomorrow. And that's a predecessor for the Partnerships for Tomorrow, except that Vision for Tomorrow was a process that the city really started and, and worked through. It had a 78-member task force, so it was a large project, you know, a lot of input. And the task force really compiled information, both from that resident survey that had been done the year before, and from the visioning process. And they came up with then, a number of different theme areas, and those pretty much are reflected in that Partnerships for Tomorrow that, that lasts a little bit later. Also in that timeframe, there was an image study for Highway 13 that was done, one of the earlier ones. And this one, they actually had a task force, it was called the Sibley Memorial Highway Rehab Task Force. And it involved, you know, a whole bunch of different entities and property owners. And they were looking mostly at the Highway 13 corridor. And thinking that the existing development that was out there, the heavy industrial, the kind of strip commercials, like, maybe not the best image of Burnsville. And it's a place, again, that when you drive through, that gives you the perception of what Burnsville is. So they, the objective was kind of to take a look at that and to work with property owners to try to find a way to, can we all agree upon some improvements or changes that would make this area better appearing aesthetically and better functioning? So we start to get some of the, some of the Minnesota River Quadrant type things, and this is allowing the auto-oriented commercial. And you'll know, you know, today, there is a lot of auto-oriented commercial along Highway 13, the car dealerships, et cetera. Those kind of date back to these earlier plans in, in having those. And then also to allow or expand more highway commercial. And this is a little bit different than the general retail type thing that was identified for the area of the Burnsville Center. Keep in mind that Burnsville Center hadn't been built yet at this time, so this is still kind of early in the process. And they also knew that whatever land use changes occurred in that area, that it was going to be very important to also look at the transportation network, because it really was not much of anything for transportation areas out there. It was just primarily the old, the old access roads to get to the landfills and to the quarry, and, and that was about it. So if we're going to make this an integral part of the city, we need to find a way to get people there and get them out, and, and to look at those things. This one, you probably can't see up here, but this is just kind of interesting in, in the way that they did these bubble diagrams. And I think what I just really want you to take away from this is that although this was done, you know, a couple decades ago, it's, it's, it's refining those ideas for our Minnesota River Quadrant. And they basically show commercial along Highway 13, industrial closer to the railroad, and, and that's pretty much really what, what we see out there today. This just shows, and again, hard to see on here, but it does show that there was an interest by not only the property owners and city, but really an interest in improving the appearance of the entire corridor. And they identified, south of Highway 13, that area of Kramer Nature Preserve, that was an area with a lot of wetlands. So environmental considerations were real important as this MRQ concept came together. And Kramer did actually, or the city actually was able to acquire that property from the Kramer family to create that nature preserve. And that was part of some of the planned unit development projects that have taken place over the years with the quarry. The, this slide, I just wanted to show you, because this is something, you know, it dates back to the, the late 80s, but the way that these buildings are set up and some of the lot size and yard requirements, this really provided the foundation for the city's current B4, our commercial, highway commercial zoning district. So when you see things coming in where we're looking for a 10,000-square-foot building, and where did that come from, and, and whatnot, it's dating all the way back to the, to the 80s. And just, I just thought it was kind of interesting when you, when you see these. But this was all part of those recommendations for the, you know, beautification, making the area look a little bit better along Highway 13. 1989 was the first year that they really started looking at concepts for the amphitheater. And this is something that, based on the McGowan family and their concepts for MRQ, I think really started to put in place the resident, or excuse me, the environmental components and providing recreational areas adjacent to the river. This was really the, the big impetus to that. And you can see this carried through in our current MRQ plan. But it really came about through a private, private development and private objectives for the McGowan property. They did, following that, we have comp plans again every 10 years. In 1990, they took a closer look at Highway 13 and the Minnesota River, came up with some ideas, really decided to concentrate on the west side of 35W, because the east side pretty much encumbered already by Wildlife Refuge and Floodplain, and it's all owned, for the most part, by Xcel. So not a lot of need to do a lot of planning over there. So we started moving and concentrating. But yet, the land use plan still shows the general industrial, although in the top, top part there, the McGowan property is moved to this CRB land use designation, and that's Commercial Recreation Business, a component to try to recognize that it's a business entity that's taking place there, but yet has this recreational or environmental component to it, bringing the public to this Minnesota River Quadrant. This also shows the beginnings of the, some of the more defined commercial zones along Highway 13, and the blue area is that Office Industrial Park, again, coming back from years of, of planning and whatnot. And that is ultimately going to become the Gateway Industrial Medium Zoning District. These are just a couple of plans. I'll let you look at those at your, at your leisure. But they're just, again, just showing how the land use and the zoning kind of go hand in hand. We talked about, I talked about the Partnerships for Tomorrow. That really occurred in 1993. The biggest points I want to make here are that it was a, it was a community partner-driven project involving the school districts, Fairview Ridge's, the Dakota County, and, and the city was one element of that. But it was a huge, huge project. And that's why you'll hear reference to it, because all of these organizations still work with these theme areas that came out of this process. They did a survey of over 400 residents, very extensive survey. There were 67 volunteers that were trained to facilitate. They had over 137 focus groups, over 700 people participating. Again, this is early 90s, so the population of Burnsville, you know, when you consider that, you know, 700 participants, that's really, really a great, a great thing. They did TV forums, they invited the same people that participated in the visioning and, and those elements to come back and be part of a task force and help to organize and prioritize some of those improvements and, and things. And they came up with the basic theme areas. And then this PFT report is part of all of the member agencies and organizations, and they continue to work towards those. And there were 64 action plans. Identify primary gateways to increase aesthetic appeal. That's where the North Gateway Guidelines come from. Redevelop, find new uses for distressed, underutilized properties. There were several industrial I-2 and I-1 zoning studies that have been done over the years. That's where that comes from. Retention and expansion of business. Our economic development, really the focus of economic development is that, and you'll find that in the city's ends and outcomes, and all of the elements and the things that the city does to try to make that occur. And in the MRQ, that's a, a big element of that concept plan, accommodating existing uses while moving toward what the city would like to see out there in the end. And then also to develop end-use plans for the Kramer Landfill and Quarry. These are just some of the, I'll let you look at these at your leisure, but those are some of the, some of the things that came out of PFT. Then, fortuitously, we had Kramer come in for a planned unit development. The land area they looked at, about 500 acres, PUD includes, and we still do take a look at the PUD every five years. And also, this concept included not only mixed use and continuation of some of the Kramer business uses, but also the lake and the huge recreational amenities. And they really came up with these concepts, which served as a major part of our MRQ. They talked about a promenade along the lakefront. One of the great things about the lake is it will be a huge freshwater lake, 300-plus acres. It will not be regulated by the Department of Natural Resources. So shoreland regulations will not apply to that, because it's not a natural public water. It's quarry that's been allowed. So we've got a lot of opportunity to do some really neat things out there and, and have the flexibility and the ability to do that stuff, because we're not subject to the state setback requirements and state height requirements and use requirements and things. So this is really what the Kramers had identified, the lake, business uses along the, between the lake and I-35. And then on the southwest corner, that would still remain kind of the Kramer, their business campus area. And then they looked at having public access on the north side, public beach, and you just get an idea here of, of the possibilities. Again, this is what we have today. So, but if you can imagine, the majority of this, you know, those, we're talking, you know, areas that are 100 feet plus deep in that quarry, so it'd be a very deep freshwater lake. As part of the Kramer PUD, they have talked about all sorts of things, how to treat the edges, like where the public beaches will be, so that you don't have just a, you know, just a quick cutoff. They looked at utilities and, and where those should be located, and it moved out of the lake onto some of the, the street corridors, those types of things. So it's just, again, just trying to bring back to, you know, where we are today in reality and, and kind of where we're going in, in this whole planning process. And these are just some more pictures. I'm going to go through, there was quite a bit of, there have been quite a bit of transportation studies, but we've talked about those. Just wanted to show you quickly the amphitheater concepts. This is about, again, 180 acres on the right-hand side, you have Interstate 35. That, about a third of the way down or almost halfway, that is that Waste Transfer Station. So that still is part of the plan, having that facility there. But then they have the area next to the river as being the public open space and the amphitheater itself in the lower left-hand corner. And mostly in providing these, when Raymond talked about the TIF districts, those really relate to the areas on the right-hand side, really along the, the highway corridor there, and where some of the bad soils are, where that Item C is indicated. And, and then through there, there's additional TIF area that's closer to 13 and 35, but it kind of relates to that. And then this graphic over here, just, I think, gives an idea, when you look at the MRQ graphic of today, a lot of similarities in terms of the accesses and some of the road improvements and things that, that will need to occur in order to accomplish that vision. This is just a, a quick, this was the actual site plan that was approved by the city. And this is the concept that they had. And again, here's our recreational riverfront area and business. And this is all the area now that is in that Commercial Recreation Business District.
Steph, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Where are we with the amphitheater plan?
With the amphitheater, the PUD is in effect. So all the approvals that the city has given are in effect. There was an environmental impact statement that was done for the project, and everything had been gone through. There were still some, one or two final things that needed to be done by the landowner, and they never were finished. And I think, you know, for all intents and purposes, probably the amphitheater has gone away, but what's still... But what still stands is, is there an ability to do something big on that, in that corridor? And we think it should be something that should be, you know, not city, not public necessarily, but something that relates to some type of recreational type use. The amphitheater worked because primarily on the landfill part of it, it was parking lot. And, and that was something that, that could work. The actual amphitheater site itself was not on part of the landfill. So you have some, some land in there that, that's buildable, but the majority of it is, is the, the parking lot.
Good thinking.
Yeah. I'm just going to go through these because I don't really, you know, we've talked about these various studies and things. I'm going to bring up this one, this is one of the studies that took place, it's called the South Collector Street. And the reason I bring this up is because you may be seeing a development project. This involves the MRQ because of that. This is where Chowin Avenue and Highway 13 come together in the western part of the city by, by Savage. And what this shows is the new Collector Road or Parkway-type facility connecting Highway 13 to, it's County Road 16 in Savage, but it's Williams Drive in Burnsville, on the Burnsville side. And that area of Savage has been developing. If you've driven down there, you will see that. And there's a small area in Burnsville that's part of this site. It's down by the St. James Church behind there and to the, to the west. And you may be seeing a, a development project come in. We've been working with a, a developer that's, that's looking at that. And hopefully, they'll be able to come in with a project. It's still, there's still another phase of development that is left, or land in Savage as well. The thing about this is that we'll have that 13 and 5 interchange really is not, it's something that MNDOT and the cities and counties agree on, no funding set for it. So who knows, you know, when it will occur. This plan is out there. Also, there is another, if you've driven by in that area and seen the Quonset Hut, there used to be an auto, an auto body place. They actually had a couple of parcels of land. That business left the city and relocated outstate, but those parcels are still available. So you may be seeing somebody come in. It's actually a, a pretty good size parcel for Burnsville to have in its zone before. So you, you may be seeing that come in here too, in the next year or two.
And this shows the proposed Chowin interchange?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. And, you know, where we, Chowin is actually one of the main future entry points into the Minnesota River quadrant. What this shows is currently, we've got Washburn Avenue by the old Menards and McCrackens as the entry. That, at some point in time, will be probably a right-in, right-out type of situation. And the main access to the MRQ will then be further to the west at this Chowin Avenue This north extension, we've already started this. What this is, this is what County Road 5 to the north of the current interchange would need to hap, or occur. And there needs to be a connection there up to Cliff Road. And we have been working on parts of that. There has been an extension of it. You see it when you drive down by 13 and 5 up to, there are a couple of new industrial buildings. But this will need to be extended, and this is one of the major infrastructure improvements that is going to be needed out in the MRQ.
And that might probably be attracting more motor vehicle?
Hopefully.
Businesses there too?
Yeah. Hopefully that, and with this, with the 13 and 5 interchange, it's supposed to be done this year. So hopefully, with that done, there'll be a couple of open parcels, new parcels that are created as a result of that. And we're hoping that that will spur interest and, and development down there. And I think that it is, in terms of Park Jeep is redeveloping, and they're doing improvements to their site. I believe the Planning Commission, have you worked with that one?
No, I haven't.
That may be one, I'm not sure if they need any approvals?
We did, we did, yeah.
Okay. I was going to say, if not, it, it should be.
We did.
But yeah, so that's a good thing, you know, starting to see some positive things happen. These are just how the GIM and GIH district came to be, and all I'm going to say about that is, they did involve, those studies involved, again, years of work. All of the property owners were involved. Everybody was contacted. There was a task force, including all the property owners. And so everyone in the MRQ knows about these plans. And basically, even though it's not everything that maybe the city wanted, or everything that each of the owners wanted, all of the entities have agreed that this is, this is a plan that, that is realistic for us and that, that we can accept. So that it's, I just want for the commissioners to know that it's, this, it's not just a plan that the city created. It is something that's, that's been agreed to by the various property owners. And I'm just going to go through these to some, to the end here. In terms of the MRQ, a couple of important things is on the landfill side, that would be the far-left side. We do have a PUD agreement with the landfill, and this is the Waste Management landfill, that when they are done, that, that will be, the end-use plan is an 18-hole golf course. It's one of the few things that can be built on a landfill. They're still going to have to be doing some maintenance work routinely because they'll be settling and, and that type of thing. But that is a part of our PUD plan, so that, that concept is in place. You can see by the MRQ plan that the basic concept that the Kramer companies has had is really the basis for the development in, in the, around the lake area and the quarry. The area to the north, both at the landfill site, we do have a trail easement for regional trail connection. And that will connect also on the southwest. Dakota County just approved a gateway plan. It's called the north, or excuse me, the Lake Marion South Creek Greenway. And that will connect basically from Highway 13 in that area all the way south down into, down to Farmington and Highway 52. So it's a major greenway, really kind of a neat thing. Things are starting to come together, and it's kind of fun to see, even though you may not see it on a week-to-week basis. Also, on the east side of Highway 35, the city is working with Exel, and there will be a plat that's coming to the Planning Commission here in your next couple of months for that Exel property. Part of that will include a new trail, and what will happen is that Black Dog Road itself is proposed to be vacated. But in its place, there will be a regional trail corridor that will be constructed. And that will ultimately connect up to the trail corridor that goes all the way up to Fort Snelling in that area. And that's really the, you know, the eastern part of this regional corridor. And that probably will be, there's grant funding for that, and they're looking at construction of that, I think in about two years, being the, the date. So that'll be really, really great to have that in place. The next major thing I just wanted to show, or share with Planning Commission is if you look on I-35, currently at Cliff Road, we've got that interchange. It's not a very good interchange. If you have driven it, come off of 35 to get to Cliff Road, it's, it's, it's pretty sharp, pretty short, and we know that that is not, in the long term, going to be suitable to accommodate traffic. Also, that interchange is too close to the Highway 13 interchange for MNDOT. So what this plan calls for and what's been agreed to conceptually by MNDOT and, and some of the other agencies is actually creating a new interchange halfway between Cliff Road and Black Dog Road. And that will occur, I believe it's 118th Street will be the, the new east-west street, and that street will go all along the north side of the lake there. So that'll be one of the major road improvements. That's also where NSP, or not NSP, but Exel, has been moving transmission lines. In some of the projects, we've approved conditional use permits for some of the transmission lines and power lines and things. That's, that's one project where utilities need to be relocated, and everybody's working together so that ultimately, you know, this, this plan can, can be accomplished. The other...
So Deb, 118th Street, would that be roughly north of the new Subaru dealership?
Yes.
Roughly?
Yep. Mm-hmm. Yep. One of the things that we anticipate is that there probably is going to be less land area that will be able to be developed around that interchange, just because of how much land it takes to accommodate an interchange. So that, you know, has, will have an impact, and the closer we get to those points and doing those studies and things, we'll be looking at refining the MRQ plan accordingly. One of the things that you'll know is to the north of that new interchange, that's Freeway landfill site, and there's a bunch of development that's showing up there. How can that be? It's a superfund site. The idea behind that is that, remember before I'd said that part of the McGowan property where the amphitheater was proposed, that's, that is not part of a landfill? Well, the idea is that if there's an opportunity to take the landfill materials from the area that's adjacent to 35, move it to the west, to that area that has never been a landfill, and then have it closed appropriately with all the liners, all of the requirements to PCA. Then this area would have the, the good soils brought in, which would create about 60 acres of developable property right next to the intersection. Yep. So that's what this, this plan kind of contemplates. And we're working, we, the city's been working with the McGowan family and PCA for years and continue, continue to, to work towards that end. And this, this plan just kind of shows, just kind of shows that, you know, basically reusing, reusing the new stuff. The state will be happy, superfund site gets cleaned up, taken care of, it's monitored, dealt with, and, and then we've got some really great development potential for land right next to the interstate. We've talked about, this is, it's kind of hard to see, but this is the landfill on the left, and then the, their artist rendering of the golf course on the right-hand side, just to show you that. We've talked about the extension that's happening for Highway 13 and 5 this next year. And these are just, we've done some other studies in the North Gateway District, being one of them, for looking at how to orient businesses, how to deal with parking lots and the treatment for buildings and sites. Because we've got landfill primarily where the current golf driving range is, we had an applicant come in to discuss the potential of putting like a, a CarMax-type facility there. And if that were to occur, if they could get the approvals through PCA to be able to do that, again, the majority of it being a parking lot area. We looked at some of the, the interesting things. Because it would be on top of landfill, most likely not going to be able to plant trees and things in there. So even though the gateway concept calls for that, because of that landfill, we'd probably be having to look at some other treatments, just because it's landfill. So there, what I'd like you to take from that is, the North Gateway Design Guidelines are just that, they're, they're guidelines. And we try to work as a staff when a developer comes in to, to accomplish those. But sometimes, sometimes there, there may need to be adjustment, and I think you, as a Planning Commission, will see over the years, when you're looking at individual developments, that there is probably always going to be some room for negotiation, and how do we make things work in a win-win-win situation for the owner, for the public, and then for the, for the city? And those are some of the things that you'll be dealing with, and I know that you did with that recent RDO expansion project. And I expect that your future applications in the Minnesota River quadrant will be very similar to that. And I think with that, we talked about the comp plan, I think that's basically it. So with that, oh, I just wanted to show you a couple of things that have happened since the MRQ project. This is at River South Business Park, which is just to the north of Highway 13 and County Road 5. This does meet the design guidelines and also the, the MRQ concept. So we've had that happen. The new Menards is, has been good. We also had redevelopment of U-Haul, which is on the, on the east side of County Road 5. You know, again, improving green space, looking to improve green space, looking to improve the appearance, you know, of the facility, the parking lot. Some of the constraints that you will be dealing with, and we will deal with in the MRQ, is that there is high bedrock. So we've got bedrock in a lot of the MRQ that limits, you know, the depth of development. So in the MRQ, unlike most of the other parts of the city, we probably aren't going to be looking for the water infiltration-type systems to happen there because of the bedrock and, and because of the, the limited amount of, of land cover. You'll also see, we'll look for, you know, green space. Anytime that we can improve, you know, the, the green space, anytime we can improve the, the appearance of the site and building will be a positive thing. But yet, in the interim, they may not have some of the irrigation facilities. Some areas of the MRQ are limited in terms of their access to water supply. So there are, there are things that, again, adjustments that we'll need to do. But that's, that's really it. And just want to open it up for, for Planning Commission. And like we say, I just wanted to give you a background, so when you're dealing with developments, which you definitely will, you kind of know a little bit about how, how this all came to be and, and what the objectives are.
Thank you, Deb. That was very informative. I learned a lot of the history that I didn't know, even though I've lived here for almost 20 years.
That's what we get, the fun of being planners. Isn't anything going to happen while I'm here? Hopefully it will.
Go ahead. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, first of all, I think Ms. Garrus is a fountain of knowledge. She went through her presentation so smoothly, just as if, you know, it was at the tip of her fingers. And she did a wonderful job. My, I think I've spent about six years now on this commission, and, you know, as a retired educator, it is always something to learn each day and every time you sit down with people. And I've learned quite a bit tonight, as the Chair has said. It reminds me that when we are discussing an application from someone at the commission level, and staff makes a recommendation to the commission, how much staff had to take into consideration before they make that recommendation? It's not just something that they take very lightly. They've got to go back to all these plannings and why they make the recommendation. And so I've always said that we have the best planning staff, I think, in the nation at Burnsville. And when staff makes a recommendation to the Planning Commission, I think we might sometimes discuss it and, and delve into it. But most times, the recommendation of staff, recommendations are upheld by the Planning Commission. And tonight, I, I think I am much more aware of how you, as staff, come up with the recommendations that you ma, you make to us. So thank you very much. I've learned a lot.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I think we all agree that we have learned a lot, and it was helpful and beneficial for us going forward. Any other questions?
Just a couple, couple, once again, thanks, Deb. I, I've learned a lot. We've got, obviously, the, the city has design guidelines kind of in place. We talked a little bit about the gateway. For the remainder of the MRQ, do we have... For the remainder of the MRQ, do we have design guidelines in place for it? Because the Gateway District really just sort of hugs 35W from 13 to the river, sort of, on both sides. So do we have design guidelines for the remainder of the MRQ?
Not anything special. We do have in the zoning ordinance, the way that the zoning ordinance is set up, you've got the individual zoning districts that give you some performance standards and things. There are the chapters on landscaping, parking lots, you know, that kind of thing.
No different to the rest of the city, then?
Yeah. But they're pretty much, you know, pretty much, yeah, community-wide. There is also a section for special provisions related to industrial zones and then special provisions related to commercial zones. And in those, there is, that's where you get the, like, the proportions of, you know, when we come in with exterior materials and requirements of things that they need to do. They're different based on if it's industrial or commercial, but they apply in general to those areas. For the Minnesota River Quadrant, the two major land areas that we deal with are the Waste Management Landfill and the Kramer Quarry. And the majority of those are not going to contain buildings or sites. So the Gateway Guidelines really try to, I think, concentrate on that corridor for 35 and then not so much, you know, not so much really on Highway 13 other than the general standards. So that's all we have in place at this point. But that brings into mind, when we deal with a planned unit development for a project or approval, that is something where there's a negotiation element that's available for, you know, through that process. And that PUD creates that zone, if you will, for that particular project. And in that, to get the PUD, there's give and take, and we look at public benefit. And, you know, in those things, as your realm of the Planning Commission and council, there's some opportunities for flexibility in those areas to do some things. And as the Planning Commission, what you bring that is so important is that you are residents of the city. And you live here, you work here, you drive here, and your knowledge of the community just in being part of it, the resident, is the really integral component. Because you're hearing at the public hearings, people's ideas and input. And, you know, as a staff, we give you the background of all of this kind of stuff. But you're the folks who live here and, you know, really have input in terms of, you know, what the development means for a community. And there's some opportunity, like I said, because Burnsville mostly does planned unit developments for these projects, there is some opportunity to take a look a little more closely at some of the design features and things of a project.
Okay. I know we've done some work on the MRQ. The city has to appropriately place some regional stormwater ponds. So if I understand it correctly, in many cases, a lot of the development, either in the Gateway or in the rest of the MRQ, that would develop, specifically where we've done recent some stuff, some of the Dvorsky property. They will not be required to donate space to stormwater abatement, like some other properties. Because we've brought it together in regional ponds.
Yep. They've tried to develop regional ponding. One of them, and I don't know if the Planning Commission was involved in this, but the city council recently looked at Yellow Freight. And the city, I believe, either we acquired land or acquired an easement to do a major stormwater pond, and that will be a regional pond there. If we look back, if I can find it here at the MRQ plan, this shows a regional pond just north of where Menards is, on the Kramer, on part of Kramer's property. Yeah, this, you can kind of see it if you go just a little southwest of the lake there. There's that pond.
It's marked number nine.
Yes. Well, that's probably, that's not going to happen there because it's all Kramer's property. And they want to look at development there. And in some further study and research, the city has found that there was more of a need or additional need in the area where Yellow Freight is. So Yellow Freight will probably be the area of that bigger regional pond in that area. Although there are smaller ponds. And in that particular area right there, the pond that is part of the, it's actually behind the Fairchild, the old Menards, there's a stormwater pond there. That was built to accommodate additional stormwater, in addition to just that Fairchild site and the Menards site. So there are, that's what I mean about the plan. They're kind of, you know, as we go along and study things a little bit closer, look at things closer, you know, there'll be some ebb and flow in this. But you're right, there will be regional ponds as opposed to the, you won't be seeing the stormwater, the types of ponds that infiltrate. Like, there probably won't be a lot of rainwater gardens out here, just because they don't want that sediment and stuff getting down through that sandstone, through that bedrock and into the aquifers.
Okay. I think that's a good use, if we can do the regional ponds, so then the other properties can be developed further. One more, two more things. Is the golf course plan to be a public, city-owned golf course, or is it a private development?
It would be private, but it would be, I believe, privately owned, but it would be open to the public.
Okay. So it wouldn't be another city-owned?
Correct. Exactly. Exactly. Yes.
And then the last question, you talked a little bit about TIF. And I know we're just about to decertify the Southcross TIF.
Yes.
And so the TIF in this area has been extended for, at what point, or can we continue to extend it, or when is its planned closure and how does that work?
I would need to get back to you on that. I'm not sure when the end date is. I do know that it was extended for a period of years and hopefully with this, you know, with the Highway 13 and the interim use permits that are taking place, that that will occur, you know, within that timeframe. But I'm not sure of the specifics. We would, you know, we could always, you know, try to go back to the legislature and further extend it. It's just that, not, I mean, school districts and counties, nobody is really excited about TIF because it takes away their tax dollars, you know, for that period of time. So whether we would be successful or not, we don't know. But I can definitely find out more on that TIF and get back to you.
Because that would drive some of the funding for some of our infrastructure in the area.
Yes. Definitely.
Yes. For specific.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I think the city needs to be commended for starting this visioning process. Start in 1976 or when, and it continues. What I would like to see is that it does continue, whether it's five or 10 years that we've been doing it. Because, you know, look how much Burnsville has changed, you know, from the 1970s to now. The diversity and the needs with the diversity, the change of the population, the needs have changed. What people saw as a need 15, 20 years ago probably has changed now. And the people thinking to have changed. You know, what people used to embrace 20 years, now they don't, or they have changed somewhat. And so I would like to see that the city continued the visioning process. We and the Planning Commission are honored that we are the eyes and ears of the city council. As citizens of the city, we are here and we give the opportunity to the population, to the people at public hearings to get their views, and then we make recommendations to the city. And I would like to put on record that the city continued the visioning process. It should be an ongoing process, you know, whether it's five or 10 years, whatever, but we need to continue it.
Well, it's very opportune because we will, you know, just with, we know what's coming with the Metropolitan Council in a couple of years. And kind of with that feeling, that's something that we can recommend to council and start putting together and including as part of the budget process in preparing for what's going to happen that next round.
Yeah. Things like the trail, you talked about. Now, 15 years ago, nobody thought about a trail from Farmington through Shakopee and coming through. And now it's almost becoming a reality. So that's when I said that people need to continue, the city needs to continue the visioning. That's what I was talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Deb. Very informative. I really appreciate it. So to build a little bit on that, in future planning and current planning, can you kind of educate us a little bit about the housing stock in the MRQ? You know, how does it match up to the current mandates by the Met Council?
Sure.
And what you might anticipate in the next round?
Yep. We have, for the Minnesota River Quadrant, there was not a lot of housing actually shown. In the concept plan, they showed housing more to the north, you know, closer to the river corridor. I'm not sure, just considering the impact of 35W and the noise, you know, there's guidelines and standards for noise adjacent, you know, in residential and how you can deal with that. I think that the concept plan that the Kramers had, showing, you know, if we can get some height in buildings, maybe similar to like 494 and Highway 100 in some of those areas, that we, you know, could look at housing, you know, in that type of a situation. I don't think we will have enough land area or enough proximity to do single-family detached type housing out there. I would think it would be some type of mixed use. And in the comprehensive plan, in the 2030 comprehensive plan, we did provide some breakouts of, you know, the number of units, the types of units anticipated. This concept plan calls for, like, some attached housing and things in terms of, but I think even like row, you know, townhomes, I'm not even sure that that's realistic out there. That is definitely something that we'll need to look further into. Burnsville, because we're 98% developed, we don't have, we don't have the vacant land supply for housing. We do a very good job in terms of affordable housing with respect to the other communities and, you know, meeting our goals and things. The council's goals are to have more owner-occupied units, because we have quite a lot of rental units. But how that takes place with the MRQ, I'm not sure. I think that's going to be one of the areas of the future plan that we're going to need to really take a look at and hone in on. Not a lot of housing as far as the current plan in this area. But if we can get, you know, if we are able to do something, especially with that landfill property and, you know, get the good soils in there and those types of things, I really think that this is going to be a very attractive, very attractive for redevelopment. Another thing I forgot to tell you, too, is that actually the I-35 bridge is planned to be redone, I believe, in the next three to four years, which is new. I mean, we didn't anticipate that that would be occurring for quite some time. So depending on what happens with that bridge replacement, you know, again, it could be some real opportunities and spur more development. Kind of a bottleneck in there now. The buses and the, you know, the lines that we have are better, you know, than they were, but there still is kind of a bottleneck there. So I hope that kind of addresses the housing a little bit.
Thank you. A couple more questions regarding the Kramer Quarry. I guess I'll just, just some guidance and information on a number of issues. One is, you know, some of the early plans showed a 2018 closure, an update on that. I also know that it's part of our waters, future water supply.
Yes.
Maybe if you can expand on that a little bit. And with that, how the recreational opportunities will match up to the need for water supply? And then I think you already answered the other part, which was the stormwater, regional pond system that'll help protect that.
Sure.
Talk about that a little bit.
Yeah. Actually, the quarry, up until a few years ago, had to de-water. Basically, they pump the water out, this is common for new development, they pump water out so that they've got an area that they can work in, keep it dry. Used to pump over 5 million gallons a day of fresh water out of the quarry area so that they could mine it, just went into the Minnesota River. The city built a water treatment plant, and we have a joint powers agreement with the city of Savage. And so now what happens is the water that used to be just pumped out into the river is directed back to the water treatment plant. And the city, both cities are using that for part of the drinking water supply. When the lake occurs, that will be a designated public, you know, water supply. And we do have to take a look at how we protect that water supply. You know, you have, because of the water treatment plant, we can treat the water. So that's a positive thing. What we have to really look at is impacts possibly of the landfills and how that works. And the city needs to work with the PCA on that. We may be looking at actually developing a landfill closure overlay, like zoning, to deal with some of that for the monitoring and things, so that land within a certain proximity of where the lake is or where the water intakes are has special performance standards or monitoring type criteria that go along with that. We will be, actually, the City Engineers Office and Environmental, National Environment Department are working on updating those plans right now, and Planning Commission will be a part of that. I think there was a little bit of discussion on that, perhaps, about your work plan for, there's, in addition to that, you know, dealing with the landfills and possible impacts, there's also the city well sites and our public water supply. And there's a bigger, actually, quite a bit of Burnsville is within an impact area for the aquifers and where the city wells are. So we actually are going to be coming up with a program and most likely zoning provisions, CUPs, special performance criteria for, actually, a large part of existing Burnsville. I mean, it goes past County Road 42, the fen area down by the river. I mean, it's a really big area and we have to look at who are waste generators, you know, and how they use different types of chemicals and things and prepare a plan to make sure that if something would happen, we can recover from that. And so that is something that, it's very timely, you know, that you ask that, because we'll be working on that here within the next couple of years. The water treatment plant really helps us because that is something that, you know, we can treat for. But we also have to look at it in terms of surface water quality. We'll have to do that.
Well, the quarry itself, are they?
Oh, the timing for both the quarry and the landfill, when we did the last comprehensive plan update in 2009, 2010, at that point, they anticipated closure probably within the next 10 to 15 years. Of course, soon after that, we have the economy that imploded. And what's happened is because of that, the filling of the landfill was much less in that time period than they expected. And the quarry, you know, the need for those quarry materials, also a lot less than they anticipated. In addition to that, there are some technological advances that have occurred, especially with the landfill, where they are able to capture or, you know, basically use the methane gas. And we do have a methane-to-electricity plant that the landfill operates. So the methane gas is actually pumped through a mechanical system. So the methane gas is actually pumped through a mechanical system to create electricity and then sold back to the power company. As that material settles, there are some different things that they are able to do. One of them, which was kind of interesting, actually, it isn't happening here, but in other places where they would use actually the leftover material from like Pepsi, when they're making Pepsi, and that actually ends up breaking down more of the materials within the landfill. So that the capacity then, because that stuff breaks down and gets emitted either through the gas or the other systems, that then provides them more space in order to do filling. At this point, we don't have a tentative closure date for either the quarry or the landfill. Kramer did come in, and they want to actually quarry deeper than what the city had anticipated, which gets them closer to the aquifers. So there's some study and research, you know, and ongoing discussions on that. But it's really, at this point, anyone's guess. The longer we go, the more technology advances, and it just seems to kind of keep pushing those timeframes out a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Deb. Again, that was excellent. Appreciate it.
Thank you for listening, thank you for coming out on a freezing cold night. Sorry about that.
No problem. Not your fault, we live in Minnesota. Next item is any updates? Commissioners, any updates?
None from the chair.
All right, then I would look for entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.